I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Perkins. Trustee Ricky. Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Wannika, would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okeydoke. Agenda item four is two of the minutes from last month's Committee of the Hall and the full board meeting. Are there edits or questions or comments for the clerk? If not, the chair would like a motion to approve and block the minutes of the Special Committee of the Hall from September 4th and the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting from September 4th. May I have the motion of both of those by Trustee Schaller and by Trustee Thompson? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair will ask for consent that the record remain open for a period of ten business days for any necessary conforming tech to the minutes. Under the President's remarks, I have two items. I am delighted to first introduce Sergeant Novak and Detective Clockcock from the Lake County Sheriff's Office. They have been busy for us. Karen, anything you'd like to add? John, anything you'd like to add by way of introduction?
Other than, I think, we had some increased amount of activity in the area recently and in all the Sheriff's Departments. I know Karen and I have met with the individuals here during daytime and your day shift commander, Lieutenant Thompson, and I know you've increased some of the patrols, but I think would behoove obviously to line up and responding to alerting people not only that we have activity, but what they should be doing to protect themselves and utilize the services of the Sheriff's Department so that we can frustrate such activities.
Absolutely. So, I had a chance to meet with Lieutenant Thompson after you guys were able to head into your meeting. We went through a couple of things. We went through some of the statistics that, you know, we pulled from, you know, say August to October and then went through some from just October and there was obviously there was uptick in activity. There's really never a rhyme or reason as to why you notice an uptick in activity. It could mean that there's a person that came into the area or that found this area and decided that this is an area that they can start to take advantage of. Since that time, I don't know if Detective Clockcock explained what Criminal Investigations Division has done since that meeting, they have had some success. But since that time, as far as patrol side, I know they have extra patrols and extra watches that have been put together. What extra patrols and extra watches are, are extra patrol is a specific neighborhood where we'll say, you know, we've noticed an uptick in activity or something that's occurring. And an extra, an extra watch would be a very specific area, say at address, where they've had some activity maybe once, twice, or anything other than that. All shifts have been aware, specifically afternoon shift and midnight shift, because that is when we do notice most of these kinds of crimes occurring. And by these kinds of crimes, I look through the list of things that happened during October. We have things like some federal force for green motor vehicles, some damage to property, things of that nature. Generally, we don't see that even as a sheriff's office happening a lot during the day. If we have that happen during the day, it's usually to a home. We haven't noticed that here. What we've noticed is that night, people are noticing that their cars have been ransacked through, law items, things like that have been taken, decorations, things like that. What we, what we do when we go to these types of meetings, when we speak to all the neighborhoods and the people that we deal with as residents, and as a resident myself of Lake County, the things that you can do to ensure that you're creating less of a chance for someone to try and do a crime to your house. If you have a vehicle that's outside, first and foremost, you want to make sure that you're never leaving anything that's you would consider valuable in the vehicle. Things that are going to bring people to your car, you know, and it sounds silly, but just power cords, people take out of cars. Generally, when we notice about burglars, burglars motor vehicle, and I think Jake would agree, they're generally juvenile. Very rarely do we find many adults that are doing car burglaries, just because you have to do multiple burglaries to even get any kind of, anything that's worth your time, I guess you would say. But they'll take things like change and credit cards that you made in the car for emergency purpose, power cords, like the adapters for cigarette lighters, things of that nature, eye pass, you know, radar detectors, map, map machines, anything else, something like that. You can leave a book bag or a purse. These are all things that attract people, especially if you leave your purse on your seat, or a briefcase on your seat or laptop. So, the first thing you can possibly do is just take all your valuables out of that. Don't leave it in there. Second, and the most important thing, if you always, always lock your car. Mission community, it's not far from Mary Long Road, that it had, that it has issued to some, not like burglar motor vehicles, but motor vehicle thefts. They're leaving keys in their vehicles, some of the residents are, and the vehicles are being stolen. It is nearly impossible to have vehicles that are made in this, in this decade, or even in the decade previous, to steal it without the keys. And there's no more hot lining and things like that. Yeah, you literally have to have the keys because they're all shipped. So, not leaving the keys in the car, not leaving the valuables in the car, making sure that the vehicles are secure, step number one. Step number two, which I tell everybody to do, if you have exterior lights, if you don't want to leave them on from the time that it turns dark to the time that it turns light, then put on motion sensors. I personally, at my house, I leave my lights on from the time that it turns dark to the time it turns light, and my, my energy bill is not that exhaustive. The new bulbs they have nowadays, it uses very little energy just to keep those lights on. I was in investigations for eight years, and when I would speak to people that I would investigate crimes with, I would ask them, what attracted you to the house? The house was dark. Why didn't you skip the house while there was lights on everywhere? And that the whole neighborhood is lit up? I'm not going to do that because people are going to see me. They like dark cars, they wear dark clothes, they like cars that are parked at the ends of the driveway and not closer to the garage. So, if you have, you know, a long driveway, parking close to the garage, you're parking outside. And other than leaving your car stereo like that, and, you know, if you do have the ability of putting in, like if you ring the doorbells, and those are amazing, they, they hit on those because those have like a little blue light or a little red light depending on the brand that you have. Forgive us for those, and they want to avoid them because it does detect motion just like anything else, and is a deterrent. These are all deterrents. That is what we want to do. We just want to keep them moving along because we're never going to have a hundred percent, you know, compliance with people staying out of the neighborhoods, but, you know, creating less of a chance, like keeping the lights on, keeping the doors locked, keeping the valuables on there is what's going to keep them alive. So, that's the best thing I can tell you to do as far as that goes. Decorations and stuff, there's really nothing you can do. But if you do have things like those doorbells, those portable cameras, or exterior cameras, those are a huge help for us. We usually get help from neighbors that have them when we do a neighborhood canvas when something like this happens, when we have areas where crimes need to be saturated, we do go through, we speak to not only the person that's been involved, but we speak to the neighbors across the street, down the street. You are your neighbor's, you know, best deterrent as well, because none of us are always home. You guys know your neighborhood way better than all the deputies do. You know what cars belong there, what cars don't. If you're seeing an uptick in things like suspicious vehicles, please call us. Don't worry about calling an emergency. I tell everybody, if you see something that's going on and you think there's something wrong, call 911. I would rather err on the side of getting deputies there faster than having to worry about, you know, crap, I have to look up the non-emergency number and I want to get somebody there. Just call 911. That's what we're there for. We'll respond. We're never going to give you hard times, but call 911, just because you don't think it's an emergency. If there's something going on and you need to investigate, call it. You will get a quick response and we'll be able to get there faster. So, looking out for things like suspicious vehicles. You know, this is going to be the time that you're going to start to notice people who are delivering packages, right? FedEx is an uptick, Amazon is everywhere, right? And so, it's hard not always spot an Amazon driver, but if you notice Amazon's kind of got a compensate, it kind of works like a reflective desk. It doesn't mean that the criminals have a key down to this, but it doesn't mean that if you're seeing people walking around, you know, not dropping, not walking up with a package, but walking away with one, things like that, that's kind of a good key. But even if you see like a van, that you think, a white panel van, it could be an Amazon guy, but get the license plate, call us in. You know, we'll be willing to have to look it up. Amazon is very good about marking all their drivers. They know where they are, GPS track even, even their contract drivers. It is nearly impossible for them to get away with anything. We have had cases and investigations and things like that where Amazon contract drivers have stolen packages, and Amazon is able to find out exactly who it was and, you know, where their body was at because they're tracking the entire time of delivery for them. So, tell your residents to watch out for suspicious vehicles, watch out for suspicious people. This is also the time of year, I spoke with one of the board members, we started to see residents in this, typically the southwestern portion of the county, where we have what they, what they call root burglaries. Root burglaries are a type of crime where it's, it's a portion of people that they're, they call them gypsy crimes because they're Romanian gypsies, and they walk up to people's houses. They generally try and prey on elderly people, but they'll go and talk to young people as well. They'll let them know that they're from the power company, from the gas company, from the village. I'm putting up a fence in your neighbor's yard, could you step outside for me and show me the property line? This is generally the rule that they follow. Their object is to get you outside your home, and they're going to get you away from the front door. And while you walk away from the front door, they get on a little handheld radio, and they're speaking to your partner who's at the end of the driveway or down the street, who then drives up, enters the house, which is unlocked because the resident just walked out. And they're literally in there less than 120 seconds, and they're generally able to find any valuables that you think that you've hidden behind anybody able to hide, and they take them and they're gone. And then they generally leave you sitting in your backyard, and they'll say they're going to come back and talk to you a little bit, and by the time you realize that someone has just scammed you, they're gone. Unfortunately, with these types of crimes, they're, like I said, they do prey on elderly victims in the residential areas, and they do this for a couple of reasons. One, because they're going to start to move slower so they know that they need to be able to get away. They can run away and they're not going to get chased. Two, they prey on elderly people because they're hoping that the way that they look as offenders, that they're not going to be, if these victims aren't going to be able to learn who they are. They wear things like, you know, hoods and baseball hats and the word glasses and there were handkerchiefs over their faces, which is all some things we key in on, we want to tell our residents to look out for. This is kind of suspicious. The village would certainly never send anybody unrepresented, you know, just to tell them they need to check their property line and things like that. You guys and every guy that I've worked with are very good at all making sure that, you know, the search comes out on spec lines and Julie comes out on mark lines, no one does that. So, we like to tell our residents to be aware that if, if they have to see a stranger at the door, they are under no obligation to open the door. And if they feel like it's just like a suspicious vehicle, if they feel something out going on, tell them to call 911. I have a guy standing right in front of me, I don't know who he is. If he's an Amazon driver, he'd be more than willing to stay there and drop off a package, or they'll just leave, and they'll be more than willing to identify him with the resident and tell them that everything's okay. Also, to kind of expand on that, these, these root burglaries and gypsy crimes, they don't just do the burglaries to homes, they also do home repair fraud and things of that nature. We also notice in the fall, when people start to silico the driveways, they'll drive around and you'll see these trucks with the, you know, oil spill over the side and they're offering to silico your driveway for $40. And it, it happens all the time, the residents will agree to it, and then when it's done, they'll say, well, now you owe me about $1,400, because that was per gallon, and that was a new gallon. And they'll pressure a lot of these residents to think that they need to pay it. And unfortunately, by the time we get a phone call from either, you know, a loved one or someone else who realizes this is done, these people are going to go die so quickly. That's something we could pass on to the village residents as well. I don't know if the village requires solicitors to have permits, they're going to go out and go door to door, but no one should ever answer solicitors as they're coming to their door and, and, and doing that kind of a deal.
We, we don't. The U.S. Supreme Court has, has really said that we, we can't, but we do have a regulation that says people can post a sticker on the front door that says, you know, no, no solicitors allowed, you're trespassing if you are.
Right. And that, that is, that is a deterrent as well. But first and foremost, it's the residents helping each other, just being aware that this is going on, and then knowing that they can call us, and, you know, like I said, utilize 911 if they have to. I would rather not have them just call us and give us their figure and say something's wrong, I don't know what it is, and let's come help them out and figure it out for them. So, that pretty much covers like the, the things that are, that are going on as far as that, and what you can use to kind of deter those kind of things. And what we're kind of doing as a patrol side to kind of expand on that. Detective Clockcock has some information. I don't know if everyone's aware, but Criminal Investigations Division was able to investigate some of those crimes that occurred, and they were able to take someone in custody yesterday, so I'll kind of pass it along to him and let him kind of expand on that.
On behalf of the Criminal Investigations Division, in addition to piggyback off of what my partner here just said, the Criminal Investigations Division also is conducting patrols in the area. Our patrols are comprised of undercover units, they're conducting surveillance and such things, driving through the neighborhoods and watching trick or treaters, and we're going to be watching people in reference to trick or treating and causing damage. This is the season also that people drive around and cause damage to mailboxes, not necessarily people from the village residents, but also people from other areas that conduct these type of criminal activities, so we watch those individuals as well. In reference to the recent thefts and everything that's been going on with the thefts of motor vehicles, we did have a man individual, he was a 22-year-old male who lives in, in the 500 block of Beacon Drive. That individual was subsequently charged with a Class A misdemeanor theft. He was processed through the jail. There's other avenues that we're looking into with that individual as well, and we're hoping to make a few more arrests in regards to that, and hopefully by this guy getting arrested, we should put some cease to what's been happening. With Halloween approaching, we will be out there in undercover units, watching the area. So, in addition to our patrols, there is this provided patrol, we will be out there in undercover capacity, hopefully putting a stop to anything that the, that we're not able to see in the market.
And also, just so the board is aware, the residents are aware, just, just because an arrest has been made doesn't mean the investigation is completely regular, like you said. They, they are still building on the investigation. I think what we found in, in doing criminal investigations is generally it's one to two people. It's not like a, a mob of people or a gang that's coming in and doing these types of things. But generally, if the person that we get and we get charges on, the other, the other people that are associated with this individual are generally well aware that that has already occurred and that that person has been in trouble. And that's when we see, like, that's when we see that such a cease and drizzle away, because now they know that the police presence is, is onto them, and they perhaps are being watched, and then they no longer want to commit crimes maybe in that area, they're in, they're moving along to a different area. So, it, it doesn't mean that they don't 100% will stop, but it does mean that this is a good start and this is the right direction to be in, and that this individual, like you said, has got, you know, more charges pending as the investigation goes on, things like evidence being sent to the crime lab, and, and all the other victims being identified, some of the proceeds that were recovered, being able to make visual identity and confirm that it is, that those items were theirs could then continue to give them more charges on this individual.
In addition to that, once this is made public, that there has been, there have been people arrested or there's persons of suspects of interest in these situations, a lot of the time when people see that in the public, kind of, that's a deterrent in its own, the fact that people are getting arrested and suspects are being brought to justice for what's been happening.
And social media is the friend of every resident to pass along that things are going on, because it's hard sometimes, I think, as a village, if you're sending out emails. I know I get emails, like probably 200 a day, between work and home and everything else that I'm a part of. So, I don't know if all residents might read, but if, if you use social media as an avenue to get, get information out, that is, that is a very good way of passing along safety tips and things like that.
One other thing that I'd, I'd like to bring up also that we're seeing a high trend in is elderly individuals are making phone calls and receiving phone calls from people such as the IRS or other, you know, military, police personnel stating that a nephew or resident has been taken into custody or brought in another country, and they're extorting anywhere up to $20,000 to $50,000 from elderly citizens that are sending this cash through currency exchange in Western Union, and that money is not recoverable. And I just want to make sure that all the citizens in the village of Lake Barrington are aware that that is something that's also happening, to be aware of any phone calls that are fraudulent from the IRS, military, police, essentially stating that there would be arrests made if this money isn't paid. Anytime that the police or IRS visit your residence, they visit and not make phone calls. No one will ever call and tell you to turn over any sort of money to law enforcement, military, or the IRS, federal government.
We want to thank you from the bottoms of our hearts because this is a small and quiet community, and tranquility is a big part of the reason people seek to live here. Our longtime relationship with the Lake County Sheriff's Office has again been validated. You know, the capabilities you bring, whether it's investigations or the crime lab or anything else, is not something any small town could replicate. I'm a big believer, and I say this to mayors everywhere, not only in Lake County, but elsewhere, why in the world would we have our own police force? You guys do such a good job. And, you know, we do have an older population, but everybody worries about safety today. And with you guys, we can feel safe. You know, I was listening, Sergeant, as you were talking, I took a few notes, and it occurs to me, as well as Detective, what you were saying, we probably should do both a website and a newsletter article on some of these safety tips. You know, years and years and years ago, my grandmother, rest her soul, was, someone came to the door, tried to do one of these deals, and she had the presence of mind, because five of her grandsons were sitting in the kitchen, they asked one of us to come out. Have we not been there? You don't know what would have happened. So, I, I really think we can advertise your insights and your recommendations more. I think our newsletter and our website gives some opportunity to do that, and we would, I'll ask the administrator to work on a piece that you guys can kind of improve on. Happy to give you the byline, so that they, they know. You really have earned our continued trust and appreciation. Please know that in this community, the elected representatives view you as our trusted and close partners, and we got you back because you've got ours.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to recognize trustees for comment. Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Trustee Schaller, I'll start with you.
Again, I echo what President Richardson says. I think we're stable frequently, we're very fortunate that we have the resources or the Lake County Sheriff's Department, because not only do we have a pair of 24-hour hours a day, seven days a week, but instances like this or major instances, we can have 10 squads, a helicopter, and whatever else resources you have on the scene. I think that's, that's something that other municipality around here can, can push, so we're appreciative. I guess the only question, as I live, like, for our shores, and a couple of our incidents have been there without divulging anything confidential, I want to do that. The person in custody or charged was involved in any of those or not?
As far as the motor vehicle thefts?
No, broad, yeah, their vehicle, I think we had two unlocked vehicles that were entered, and another one, they had $6 on the front seat and took some money.
Those specifically, I'm not sure. It was one of my partners that was working the investigation primarily, so I was just passing along the information, but I don't know specific locations of where, where they were charged.
Okay, all right.
There was, there was, there was items recovered from the vehicle that essentially brought the charges forward after locating.
Yeah, I think the only, anything taken on the other two was just cash. They broke a window.
Do you know what the addresses are? We can absolutely.
It was Woodview, I think, that the one was broken into. The other two were up on Cedar Ridge. And then the whole thefts have been Thornhill, Oak Hill. Two unlocked and one supposedly where the door was entered.
And I know they were able to recover last night, I heard on the radio, I believe it was two radar detectors, and I know that the detectives are still working there, sorting reports to find out what items were taken from some of those vehicles, to find out what, what they need to contact, to see if they can, you know, look at those items and say, okay, that looks like mine, and then expand on that from there.
I just think the presence of what you're doing is the biggest deterrent, I think, you can have. Appreciate it. Thank you.
In addition to that, sometimes it takes, it takes weeks.
Oh, I know.
For some of this stuff to turn up, which actually turns up in a bombshell or in someone else's possession that ends up turning around and giving someone else up, so.
That's why that stuff goes so that you can eventually get around it.
Well, we had, the sheriff and his wife came over for a little bit, we did at our house, and he said, is your house been ransacked? I said, no, it's just the way we normally. See, we'd be tough on the detectives, you couldn't tell our normal junk from, from being ransacked. My wife's going to kill me when she hears that. Trustee Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just have two things. Number one, I also live in Lake Barrington Shores, and I'm really encouraged, really encouraged by the fact that past couple of days of seeing your cars, you know, in Lake Barrington Shores, which is terrific deterrent. And the second thing is, as former, former member of the military police, we wouldn't be calling people.
And thank you. Trustee Mitchell?
I just want to say thank you very much. It is, it is comforting to see the cars around, and it, it really helps. As I said, why in the world would we have our own, you know, go out and set up a police department when we have, I think, the best of our around? So, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Really appreciate that.
Please know the welcome mat is out, the coffee is on, and you're in the neighborhood. I'm glad to have you here, and thank you for, for the hard work, and as you said, these matters are not yet fully concluded, so we look forward to seeing you here.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Detective, very much. I also want to recognize Erica Cody, who is the owner of, a new business owner in Lake Barrington. She is the owner of Northwest Medical Thermography, and I'd love her to come up and tell us a little bit about her business, and I think she has some things she'd like to share with us. I also want to recognize Aria Peterson, who's dropped in to see us tonight. Always glad to have you here. So, Erica, welcome, and tell us about yourself and about the business, and why you chose Lake Barrington, and how's it going so far?
All right. Well, thank you for having me, by the way. My name is Erica Cody, and I've, I've been in the holistic world for a long time.
Fill into the microphone a little bit more for the, for the benefit of the camera.
I've been in, in the holistic world. I helped my now late Dr. Cody running a corrective business for a long time, a very successful business, in fact, over growth. But I've always loved the Barrington, especially this area, Lake Barrington area, and after reading past, I knew that I needed, I wanted to move the business someplace new. And I had a very good friend of mine who has health emotion right there on Pepper Road, and she said, come on over, let's, let's do this together. And that's why, and, and I'm like, yeah, totally makes sense. So, I will tell you a little bit about me. I am, I have four kids. One of them's in the Navy, he's a Duke engineer, I have an older one, I have two grandkids, and two younger ones still at home, so I have a crazy world all the time. But besides my children, my grandchildren, my biggest passion is just helping people, helping people navigate with their, their health questions, like why do I feel this way, and, and, or, you know, helping them get a heads up, like if they might be facing a health crisis in the near future, maybe we can help them, you know, take control of their health beforehand. And then my other big passion is I love horses, and helping horses. So, everything I do in my practice is for humans and horses. So, I carry thermography, and I do thermography, which is radiation-free health screenings. What thermography helps us do is recognize the differences in our body that could be indicating problems. We're very well-known for breast screenings for possible pathology or situations like that. We're also very good at helping people understand if they might have cardiac issues, that shows very well in thermography, and there's many other, you know, we can go into many other health issues, but the exciting thing is we can do the same thing for horses, and the great thing about that is they can't tell you what's wrong. They can't give you a lineup of symptoms. We have to guess, and so this kind of helps take a guesswork out. It's fine. I think that, you know, horses are just magnificent, and just to, you know, be around and be able to help give them a voice when they don't have it. I love, I love doing that. So, I, you know, that's the core of my business, everything I do is for humans and horses. So, we have a few other therapies that we're adding, that we're very excited for. We have, we've just added the Beamer blankets for horses, so if you have a horse that gets a little crazy, we can help calm them down, especially when they're a high performer. We can also do that for humans, so in the practice. And, yeah, I think I'm very, feel very blessed and thankful and happy to be a part of this community and helping man and beast get well.
Well, we, we're delighted. Did you grow up in the area?
Actually, I, I grew up in Marigold.
Okay. It's not too far.
Yeah, out this way.
Well, we're, we're delighted. I, it is our custom to yield so that every trustee can ask questions out of them. I'm interested to know what originally, you mentioned, you know, kind of your people person. First of all, thank you, thank your son for his service to our country.
Yes.
We revere that in this room, and we are very grateful, and so please let him know that our thoughts and prayers are for his safety and those of all who serve us in uniform all the time. all the time. God bless him. God bless him.
I will tell him, I talk to him often. He actually is inspired by his youngest brother. My youngest son, who is 11, is actually part of the SEACAT, and he already knows he's going into, he's going into service, maybe he has to be the mediator.
I know that basic sense of thermography, but is it like an MRI where you go into the tube, or how does it work?
Okay. Well, I'm glad you asked that. It actually works a lot like photography, actually. And what we're looking for, so we're not going into a tube or anything, we do a series of profiles. Say, we're doing a hat if you may have sinusitis or TMJ or something like that. We have a series of imaging that we'll do, like front and lattes, and then we'll even do the back and the neck. And what we're looking for, a lot of people think we're looking for the hot spots, we're not looking for the hot spots, because every one of us has hot and cool spots in our body. What we're looking for is the symmetry. Okay? If you're not symmetrical as we were designed, then you have to ask why, what does that mean? Sometimes that might mean kidney dysfunction or liver dysfunction, according to which patch of skin is hyper or hypothermic.
Interesting. Who pioneered the cellulos that have been around?
Actually, it was first in 1920.
Wow.
Was the first thermography that was discovered, infrared, learning about infrared and what you can do and what it does. Well, started in 19...
Who's easier to deal with, the horses or the people?
The horses.
I wonder, can animals be hypochondriacs?
No, you can't. That's the beautiful thing. You know, it's just a joy to find it without having to do something like really basic, like nerve blocks and that kind of thing. But I also love helping, you know, I've had several, you know, people that have helped, you know, them have a heads up on their health before, you know, take it while it's a health issue before it turns into a problem.
Yeah, getting ahead of curve is always valuable. Let me yield to Trustee Mitchell for any questions or comments.
I'm just delighted to know that this, I mean, they may have used that on him as a child, it was coming out of 20.
No, I was trapped in my head. That's what I told you. I'd love to know yours.
Thank you. I am so delighted to see new business and business development in our village. It's wonderful, in particular, people who are coming and joining a host of other services and things. It's wonderful and refreshing, so thank you. Welcome.
Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, welcome to the community, and it's really terrific to see another, really terrific type of service, of health service in the village for the people who live here, and I think it's a marvelous opportunity for everyone to, in essence, in a way, get checked, to see how they're doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Schaller.
Thank you. Where exactly are you, and how can people make contact with you, and what are your hours?
Actually, because I'm a single mom, I, my hours are according to my patients' needs.
Okay.
I have a very big Facebook presence. On the internet, I actually have information.
Oh, please.
That I'd like to pass out. I have more on my...
And I'll ask the clerk, Erica, to leave information for the trustees who are not here this evening, so that they can also have access to it.
There's actually been quite a few articles that I've been interviewing and written, waiting.
Congratulations.
Kind of exciting, and I brought some, and I can leave it here if you guys would like to see them and kind of read them.
Yes, sure.
I would love it.
Thank you.
I'll have to get one.
Karen, nice to share.
Yeah.
Karen, nice to share.
So you don't have, there's, oh, you are Main Street, you are in Barrington?
Well, I was temporarily, I was in Main Street, but traffic was a little difficult in that area, I gotta tell you. When my great friend, Yurga, in Health and Motion, extended the offer to join up with her, I took it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they brought me five minutes from my home, so that I love them.
How do you handle the horses? You can't bring them to the establishment, can you?
No, I gotta go to them. Hopefully, very soon in the near future, I'm gonna start looking for a barn that has no use, that I can take over and have a stationary place for it. That's my hopes and dreams in the future, so that I can control the atmosphere. Thermography is, you know, very sensitive to heat and cold, so that I can help horses here around, otherwise we're kind of limited. The bigger equine thermographers are like down in Florida, because they can do it all year long.
Sure.
I have a niece who's a ferrier, and I have, my daughter has a longtime friend, kind of adopted daughter of our families, and she's a large animal that spends a lot of time in the eucestrated world. Those are serious animals.
Yeah. They are. My best friend is, she has a lot of horses, the polo ponies for the Barrington Hills Polo Club, and so I get to, you know, play around with them and practice on them, so, you know, a lot of fun.
Well, we're grateful for your time. We certainly wish you the best of luck in your new business, and please keep us posted on things we can do to be of assistance to you. And as I said to the officers earlier, say to all of our business owners too, the welcome mat is out and the coffee is on, so.
Good to know. Good to know.
Thank you very much. Trustee, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Now, those Lake County Sheriff's do a great job. Agenda Item Six is the first.
I'm sorry? Do you remember this? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in.
Okay. Agenda Item Six is the first opportunity for the public to address the board on non-agenda items. I don't see residents seeking that, so we can move to the consent agenda, and I love the consent agenda. It's one of the best things you've brought to this job. Seven A through seven D. A, appointment of plan commission and CBA members. B, Friar Farm electrical work. C, pavement patching Woodland Drive. And D, pavement ceilings abandoned over Barrington Road. Chair will yield to the administrator for brief comment. These were discussed in the video that all pre-preyers, so we don't need to revisit them in detail, but for the benefit of the record here this evening, just a quick review.
Sure. The appointment of plan commission and CBA members deals with, staff is recommending that plan commission members who meet on a more frequent basis also serve as the members of the zoning board of appeals. This will provide a more efficient and effective zoning board of appeals process, especially like our CBA just previously has not met for the past 10 years. We don't have things that come up that often because of our large lot size, so it just makes sense that it's the same people that serve. The Friar Farm electrical work, when we were installing the exterior lighting and camera installation over at Friar Farm, it was discovered some additional lighting units were needed, and in the wooden shed and the metal garage, and so we asked our contractor to do that work. The pavement patching, Woodland Drive is deteriorating at a little bit faster rate than we had hoped. It's an older street, and so to help band-aid it for the next few years before we can resurface it, to ask Cuban Township to reduce the pavement patching on that, up to $15,000 worth of full depth and partial depth patching. And the pavement sealing on Savannah and Old Barrington Road, that again is, we've done some proactive maintenance work in the past with a recomite sealer that helps extend the life of the pavement by keeping the oils and asphalt into the surface and makes them not deteriorate at such a fast rate. So that's a recomite program, and so that's a motion to approve a contracted amount of $17,230.35 to the network.
All right. Why don't we momentarily skip to the administrators and the clerks' report, and then we'll come back and vote with Trustee Thompson's terms.
Sure. Oh, do I need, okay, so?
Agenda Item 9, administrators.
Yeah, okay, and, so. Here it is. I was looking for it in my pack, it was hidden.
We can go back.
I got it, yeah. So the administrators' report. The new waste management contract began on October 1st, and as a reminder, this contract is saving the village over $118,000 from our previous contract. We will have unlimited landscape bag pickup, so no stickers are required for the entire month of November. We'll have one free bulk item pickup every week versus every once per year. Stickers are also, now can be picked up at Mower Works in addition to the Village Hall and Remax. I'd like to thank Village Clerk Lisa Pena Tavakal for that, going over to visit Mower Works and her to do that. In addition, this month, residents can call Waste Management and change out the size of their rolling cart for free, so if they have a, let's say, a larger waste bin that they don't use that much, they can call in and get a smaller, and save the recycling. Second, I want to thank you all again for sending me to the ICA conference. The focus on these sessions were smart leadership and courageous and resilient leadership as well. So I talked to several vendors on a number of topics, cybersecurity, economic development, permitting, and transparency, and I'll be following up with them on more in-depth discussions. And it was interesting, because there are a lot of towns that were much larger than ours, and actually, some of them were smaller than ours, and it's exciting to exchange ideas with the administrators from the different areas, and, you know, we're all more alike than we are different. And as an extra bonus, I received that $2,500 scholarship to attend this event from the ILCMA, so obviously, I'm ready to present for that as well soon. Trustee Schaller and I went to the LDS ARPS this month. Last month, we discussed tree preservation efforts at LDS, and we went through the updated village tree preservation ordinance and the annual reporting by LDS as we move forward with the... I'm also happy to report that Old Barrington Road is done, and it came in 10 and 1/2% under their proposal cost, basically because we had Cuban Township in advance do a lot of drainage work that was needed to be done, and some slightly less quantities for driveway and bunge joints. Baycock did their water testing, and overall, in Lake Barrington, two of the 11 wells where people did the testing, tested positive for coliform, and no samples tested positive for nitrates, and this is about the averages other areas, testing positive for coliform, coliform, coliform. And so people got reports on that right away, if they had negative reports, so they can take some appropriate action on that. Lake County SMC held their deicing workshop last week, and all 12 of the Cuban Township employees who drive for snow plowing in Salt in our area attended and learned proper anti-icing techniques, which are before the storm, like seeing the wet strips on the pavement in the past, and the importance of calibrating our equipment. And I think that one of the nice things that I learned by hanging out with these guys all day was that, the good news is that Cuban Township has already implemented a lot of these best practices. They just haven't really advertised it a lot, so I talked to them, and we're gonna come up with some outreach this winter to let people know what they're doing and why they're doing it, because it's not always appropriate to have bare pavement on our, in a snowstorm. You know, so proper deicing and snowplowing technique saves money and reduces the amount of chlorides we put in our streams and waters. And the Barrington area legislative breakfast was held last Wednesday. Trustee Thompson and Treasurer Hersh attended, along with myself. Senators Christina Castro and Dan McConkey, along with Representatives Anna Moller and Colleen Miller-Wall, shared insights into Springfield, and their thoughts on a variety of issues affecting local government distributive funds, school, police and fire pensions, and economic developments in the region. And last but not least, the draft Fox River Quarter Plan has been revised based on feedback received at the public open house. I attended it at the end of August, and throughout the public commentary period they had. So the revised draft plan is available on the Fox River Quarter Plan website, if anybody wants to follow. So that is it.
Terrific. Questions for the administrator? That was a great report. Okay, let's go back to Agenda Item 7, and we have the administrator reviewed A through D, so Chair would like a motion to approve and block. Agenda Items 7, A through 7D, as stated in the recommended actions of the consent agenda. A, motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-R-12. Thank you, Lisa. Resolution advising consenting, confirming, and ratifying the appointment of village president, of village residents to serve on the Village of Lake Barrington Plan Commission and the Village of Lake Barrington zoning board of appeals. B, motion to approve the invoice from phone lines incorporated in the amount of $4,080. C, motion to approve up to $15,000 in work for Cuban Township to perform pavement patching work in accordance with our intergovernmental agreement and price quote. And D, motion to approve an agreement with Corrective Ashfall Materials LLC in an amount not to exceed $17,230.35, and authorize the village administrator to execute necessary corresponding documents. May I have that motion approved by Trustee Schaller? Thank you. Second by Trustee Thompson. Thank you both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda Item 8 is the treasurer's report, and I'll ask Mrs. Fisher to come up.
Good evening. So we have for you, our financial statements for the four months ended August 31st, 2018, of our fiscal year, so we're one-third through our fiscal year, so you'll see we're 33% when we compare actual budget. So looking at page 2 of the flash report, we have $27,000 in assets, excuse me, $29,900 in assets. Liabilities at $1,140,000, and equity with $1,776,000. For the four months ended August 31st, our revenues are $1,146,000. Total expenses are at $836,000, for a net income of $309,000. That compared at this point last year was at $128,000. So as we've done in the past, we'll go below that dotted line and look at what we've called regular operations, and you can see that regular operations, that income is $225,000 this year compared to last year at this point of $138,000. I did notice that chiefly the differences there, sales tax is a little bit higher than it was at this point last year. Thankfully, that's, you know, that's speedway. Real estate tax revenue is a little bit higher than it was at this point last year, and I believe that is due to the fact that a lot of them paid their taxes early. In 2017, we get that state income tax deduction. Okay, let's flip forward. We can flip forward to page 12 and 13 and take a look at the actual budget. So you can see total revenues are 38% actual to budget. On page 12, page 13, we're at 28% for expenditures that look actual to budget. So we're ahead on revenue and behind on expenditures, which is both good directions for us. I think just one thing to note, you know, building permits this month alone was $65,000. That's basically half of that budget, although most of the revenue is coming in at this point of the year. We'll have some in, you know, early spring next year, but that number is gonna pull up our overall actual to budget number, as did the real estate taxes collected earlier. Any questions on the budget, on the actual to budget, budget numbers?
As always, I kind of, I love that flash report.
Yeah.
And especially that area below that little gray line you put for us in terms of regular operations, and then the extraordinary items on top of it. And we had a big bump in cash, looks like above. Where is that coming from?
From this one, actually.
Below the line from 128,4 to 309,5, and then up on the SS side, there's always, I understand, corresponding liabilities and equity, but that's a big bump, almost 700 grand in the cash release. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I'd have to...
That's fine.
I can sort of get back to on that, or I can take a quick look and see if something jumps up at me.
Are there rules of thumb about that for municipalities, kind of best practices about that? Because we have to be a lot more conservative, and cash is wonderfully conservative. Not my way of complaint at all, more by way of education itself, so.
Well, the, most of that money, you look on page 3 of your report, you know, detail the assets, it's in the, it's in the money market account.
Sure, okay.
Which is paying, you know, at market rates. I won't get back to on that, Kevin, because I'm sure there's a...
Yeah, I, not to put you in, don't go to a lot of trouble, I just, something that I noticed, since it was good news, I didn't wanna...
Right.
We like that kind of news. Yeah, we like that kind of news. Never happens at home, but...
With that, the school impact fees we collected and the Wannkey Trust that we... Well, Wannkey Trust is about $80,000, $90,000, so that wouldn't be the bulk of it.
Okay.
I'm sure it's, it'll hit me on this, I'll probably be sitting there, it'll probably hit me, so I will definitely speak up. I mean, I noticed our accounts payable is also about $300,000, you know, almost $300,000 at this point last year. It's gonna be a timing difference. We are actually, we are slowly cashing in the bonds that we have in investment to pay for those... for those school impact fee work that we've been doing as well. So I will definitely get back to on that. Any other questions on the balance sheet that I can answer?
Thank you. Stump to Treasurer.
Yeah, that's a good one. I'll get back to that.
Back to the show.
I'll get back to that one. Okay, so let's go forward to page 14, the Motorfield Tax Fund. Current assets in there of $173,000. You know, we had the Savannah work was paid through this fund, and contract approval was $218,000, and paid to date is about $175,000. So a little bit of cash was taken out of this fund to pay for that work, but most of that's been paid for this year. Page 18, Water Sewer Fund. So, you know, that's about $1,005,000 in net current assets in that account, and we are holding onto that for long-term capital expenditures. We have $140,000 planned for remaining to be spent in fiscal year 2019.
And that completes our work on the water tower.
Well, right now, we're working on the filters.
Iron filters, yes.
The water tower, I believe, is done.
It's the iron filters that are...
Iron filter removal tanks, yeah.
And you'll see some warrant requests for that tonight as well. Okay, so on page 22, Open Spaces Fund. It's about $200,000 in that operating account. That is all, that's all being spent this year, once we complete the purchase and continue with the improvements being made at the farm. Any questions on the financial statements before we go to the warrants? Okay, so the warrants, I've viewed all the expenditures, there are invoices, and there are a number of unusual ones this month. I tried to sit down the highlights, because there's so many, you'll recognize, I mean, there's something that hasn't been discussed before. Warrant A, Aaronson Conde, we did approve a contract in January for a new HVAC system. So a $15,820 check was written as a 50% deposit. Let's go down to Cuba Township. This was just discussed in the committee of the hall, there's an invoice for $12,544. That's for the paving at Hillside and Hillview, it's the sunken pavement and the sinkhole and storm sewer discussion that we had earlier this evening. EUO Sullivan Consulting for $3,000. This is a consultant, he's been used to coordinate with Lake County on the demolition of the Tarkowski property. HR Green, there's two invoices for HR Green, both have to do with pavement work, they oversee the pavement work, a portion related to the parking lot here in the Village Hall, and then a portion related to Old Barrington Road. You'll see they'll split out 3412 and $15,636. Open Spaces Fund has three checks roughly between, you know, one check for $4,080 and two for $52.25. That's all the electrical work being done at the farm. Those have been approved, and the $44,080 was approved earlier this evening, or we talked about it, and we made a whole, and recently just approved earlier meeting, so we talked about that. And then in answer to the question about the water sewer fund, the check for $42,000 to remove the $2,000 for BP and T and Co., that's payment one for painting of the iron filter removal, the iron removal filters. And then down below, Dixon Engineering for $9,108, that's related to the painting of iron filters, that's the engineering inspections being held by Dixon Engineering Network. That's it for warrant A. Warrant B will look a little bit confusing to you, and I apologize. You'll see there's two deductions, two adjustments to warrant A. Warrant A was put together before I realized that there was two amounts on here that should not have been included, they were a hell of a from last year. There's a $4,000 for James Vineger, and $100 for Fox River Ecosystems, that was actually on the credit card. So warrant B subtracts those amounts, so that we come down to a correct total. I believe, I have to talk, I have to do the math here, Debbie was supposed to deduct the $100 there, I believe it's probably deducted, but I'm going to have to calculate it, unless she missed the brackets around the $100. And also finally, so in accordance with our travel, meals, and lodging reimbursement policy, we need to separately itemizing travel by staff. Village accountant Deborah Vernon did attend a conference, the IGFOA in Peoria, she took the bus down there, so that was a $75 charge for the bus. And then you'll see her conference fee and hotels and lodging.
So a long buster.
Yeah, that was her twice, yeah. And one other note on the warrant B for the Open Spaces Fund, the Applied Ecological Services, $4,600, that was for grant prep for the grant application. Any questions on the warrants?
Okay, are there questions for the Treasurer? All right, thank you. As always, Debbie and you do such a good job. God did not give me this evening, and I'm very grateful to you for this. Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 8A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of August 31, 2018. B, pay bills in the amount of $350,399.39, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated October 9, 2018. And C, pay bills in the amount of $8,363.97, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated October 9, 2018. May I have a motion to approve and block? So, by Trustee Schaller, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Thank you both, gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda Item 10 is the clerk's report.
Hey, Halloween hours, it's not really Halloween hours, Halloween's all day long, it's trigger treat hours. I call me from 3 to 7. November 6th, general election. Today was the last day to register to vote in person with the deputy registrar, right, Karen? Right? All registrations done by mail, last of, postmarked or delivered to the county clerk's office by today. If you still need to register, there's Grace Registration, which starts on October 22nd at Village Hall. That's when early voting starts as well, and that is October 22nd through November 5th. If you are interested in voting by mail, the clerk's office must receive your application by November 1st at noon. You can choose an online electronic application or a paper copy. So do you have any questions?
What are the hours for early voting?
They are 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday 9 to 2, and close Sunday.
And that's here in this building?
Correct.
To benefit those who might watch. All right, are there questions for the clerk?
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me. Pardon, that was my mistake.
Baycog's Annual Member Dinner is, just putting a reminder out to people, that's Friday, October 26th at 6:00 PM, at Onion Pub and Brewery. So if anyone would still like to attend, we can sign you up.
Okay. Where will it be held, do you know?
At Onion Pub and Brewery.
Thank you. Just like you said. I'll lap behind today.
We don't.
Are there questions for the clerk on our report? Marbles, thank you very much. Move to the reports of the standing committees. Trustee Thompson and I are working with Kathleen Scott and with the administrator on the focus groups. You see I did a lot of work on the airplane coming out. Yeah, since you might read the live version. We're going to meet later this week and try to finalize these things and get these focus groups rolling. Jim has put in an inordinate amount of time and is deserving of recognition and thanks, because it's a, it's a very valuable exercise. It's going to give us a lot of insight into why people choose to call us home, and what we value most as a community, and what we seek most to preserve, and what we are concerned might threaten, our quality of life, so thank you for that. Under external relations, I, so that's my 11A, and then 11D, I only have two things to say. Clemson and Notre Dame are defeated, and that's as good as any can be. Take me now, Lord.
So there's no, there's no recognition of the SEC?
No, no, no. Georgia and Alabama are just loots, their flash is in the paint. Oh, golly. Those bulldozers, really. So those are my two reports, and not much else, so we can move to 11B, Community Relations. Trustee Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first like to note that I was unceremoniously volunteered to represent the village of Lake Barrington on the Barrington School District 220 Referendum Advisory Committee.
See what happens when you miss a meeting.
We are 60 strong, broken up into 10 six-person teams to discuss and draft a referendum proposal to District 220's Board. And that, that proposal is what they call Blueprint 200, Blueprint 220 Plan. Let's see, the blueprint is just that, a blueprint, it's the recognition of four teaching and learning priorities, surrounded in the form of a wheel, surrounding the hull of student learning. And I have, at least it was kind enough to make me copies of the basic wheel. And it's both sides for those of you who own it for the front. So, and this, the committee is to be used to determine the potentials for a referendum question on the April 2, 2019 ballot regarding two key identified topics, facilities, maintenance, and upkeep, and new additional spaces and features. If the committee recommends a no referendum on the ballot, that's that. If the committee recommends a referendum question, our charge is to propose a specific recommendation including this clause. We have three more meetings to render a decision and potential proposal to the District 220 Board. Will there be any questions on Blueprint 220 at this point? Thank you.
No, thank you. You know, the, the work that we're doing on the, on the focus groups really goes to this, because it's the schools that are a big part of the draw. They are expensive.
Yes, they are.
Places we give to the residents on the property tax bills, make that abundantly clear.
But, excuse me, Mr. President, they are, they're, we have identified two basic items that are keys to people moving into this area. One is the school system, and the other is the park system, systems. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, no, no, no. It, it's incumbent upon us to support the right things, and then it's incumbent upon our colleagues at the school board to make sure that the most is gotten out of every nickel. Kind of what Trustee Mitchell does here. Thank you. Any further comments or questions for Trustee Thompson?
I have more.
Oh, please, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Try to get out of your room.
That's all right. Halloween hours are all day, as the chair of the board is.
The Lake Barrington Shores Community Relations Club has asked trustees Rigby, Schaller, and Thompson to attend their November 15 meeting, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Lodge of the Shores, for the members of the club and any other residents that are inclined to ask questions regarding the Village of Lake Barrington. Veterans of LBS.
Jim, let's go back to that subject when you're done. You have to cover the opening meetings, actually.
Sure, yes.
Oh, thank you.
I questioned that, you know, but I was... The Veterans of LBS are inviting all village residents and their guests to their Sunday, November 11, 11:00 AM Veterans Day Ceremony at the Lodge of the Shores. The veterans are, once again, serving their famous cake, coffee, and water. Also, the, the Veterans of LBS in memoriam of their previous president, John Vessel, are, in his memory, have established the John Vessel Memorial Fund. Knowing about the village purchasing the family property, they would like to discuss the potential of providing some sort of Vessel memorial work on the property. And that's, those are all my comments for the report.
Thank you. And it might be something that Trustee Mitchell, in his role as Chair of Open Spaces and Village Facilities, can discuss with you.
May I follow up?
Please.
Jim, what was the date again for that?
November 15.
Okay. So what we should probably do is consider that group to be a village committee, and we'll simply, we'll publish a notice that it's a meeting of that committee at that event, and we have to do that at 48, post it, and send it to the press, 48 hours in advance, and that would be, you will be having a public meeting there of, of the committee, and they'll be able to answer questions as a group, and, and we will be in compliance with the meetings.
Thank you.
If you could get the exact hours and...
7:00 to 8:00 PM.
7:00 to 8:00 PM, okay. So that the clerk can everything to make the notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, terrific. Trustee Burke is not here, so we will skip over that. Trustee Rigby is also excused this evening. Karen, is there anything under Finance, HR, and Administration that you're aware of that issue? F, Open Spaces and Village Facilities, Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I'm looking forward to an extensive report next month, as we pull together the, is the guts of a report. It's a very sharp report, from the Sharp Architects Incorporated, that hooks overall facility assessments. So it's nice, because it's got the issues related to our buildings, our facilities, and then some prices for things that need to be done, to put it on a long-term plan, which is something I've been anxiously trying to do for quite a while. This gives a professional perspective. So the village administrator and I will, are going over this with a fine toothed comb, and especially aware of it, having spent my day working on trying to reduce the cost of windows in a property that we were doing. It's an interesting thing to work with architects, but I don't know.
One of the, I think, interesting to note on that report was, before, we now have the final report, but right when Lisa Sharp, the architect, was giving me the draft and the final, you know, she said, in the report to, you know, you're really going to have to replace those furnaces when they're coming in, and they broke down. It's, remember, that's not like the special approval to get Aaronson Conde down in here and replace three of them in our, in that other row, we've got 10 more to go, but I thought, it's like, that was great timing, Lisa.
Prophetic.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the big issue, as that comes together, and we're very, very excited about that, so, thank you.
Questions for Trustee Mitchell? Then 11G, Public Safety and Gating Communities, Trustee Schaller?
Thank you, President Richardson. As we heard from Lake County Sheriff's Department, there's been enough activity that it warrants special attention, and we have been given that. So again, something to follow up with, I'm embellishing, reminding homeowners and residents of the village that if they see anything suspicious, call 911, and let the Sheriff's Department investigate it, because that's a good way to deter that activity, and hopefully it will decrease as we move forwards. You get into certain little spats like that, and we have, we're in one of them right now, haven't had any measurable activity like that in certain areas for a number of years, so it's a concern, but it's being addressed and... concerned, but it's being addressed and fortunately we have the sheriff's department on top of it, obvious. Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, if you've read the papers, the district bought a piece of property next to a middle school down on Dundee Road and there have been some objections as to what they do with that property, it was supposed to be a station number three, the main station's here in Pepper Park, that's where the chief and the staff primarily operates, but they wanted an additional station, so they bought that property, I think with the eventual ambition of adding a full station down there, but for right now, just an ambulance used because it's a house, but there's been some kickback from the school district about proximity of that to the school and things like that, so it's, we'll see what happens with regards to it. Chief Cryer, I want to thank the department, they had a presence in our barn stump, they had one of their main trucks, they had their vehicle, their, over their own vehicle and then the Italian chief came down too. I believe they, hopefully they came back after 8 o'clock and put out the fire.
They did.
Had this nice bonfire and didn't want to get out of control, so they, so they come back and I'm glad that they, glad that they did. Chief Cryer is, I think, believed head of the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association, so got a good representation, said it's a great department or a great staff. I go to their meetings, I also go to the Wakanda Fire Protection District meeting where they have approved purchase of a new fire truck. You know how much a fire truck costs? That's probably without all the bells and whistles, but that's the patient, so they're going ahead and they're buying themselves a fire truck and apparently it'll be delivered in the next six months, so.
So they're not using Amazon?
That's right. They're not using ride.
That actually sounds like a low price to me.
Well, they had, actually the highest on the monthly list was 519 from a company in Appleton, Wisconsin. And Rosenbauer was the low of 454. Beretta Fire in Louisiana, 497, and E1 in Ocala, Florida, 469.
They can come out to about 7:50 to 8:00 by time they?
Oh, yeah.
By time they have to contact them. Yeah, exactly, send them out to another shop after that.
They also elevated E.J. Miller to Division of Chief Training, Daniel Lesher to Fire Paramedic. It's interesting, you go to their meetings and it's usually on Thursday of the month and they're downstairs and they're done in 20 minutes. When you go there, all the equipment is out on the road and the main station is vacant, you know something is going on and that's what happened this time, so they had, they do a nice, nice job regards to that. As far as gated communities, you'll be happy to know that the developer of Tallgrass has been awarded America's Most Trusted Home Builder for the third year in a row by the Light Story Research, so it's quite a feather in their cap. And I did have a visit from one of their sales agents, they have three spec units, two are almost completely done, all have first floor masters and a guest suite, they have seven purchased and being built and one more being built and somebody even purchased as well, so for handling over Tallgrass, they're encouraging.
Yes, I would suggest that, that we contact Max Grandies about that because that's certainly further than Barrington.
That's terrific.
Yes, and I'm being honored for that as well. Beyond Clay, they're obviously, moving forward, I've been trying to make contact, they have an HOA board meeting in the end of November, right across the hallway here, and I've been invited to attend that with the president and their board, so looking forward to that. As far as LBS, we've heard about the activities, so we have increased controls that are taking place at LBS. The Arts of Craft Show is the first weekend in November and there will be a bonfire on the beach Thursday night at 5:30, so hopefully we won't burn down Lake Barrington Shores.
I would just like to add regarding the craft show?
Yes.
Pardon me, that my 18-year-old grandson, grandson who's in, going to our school, has a successful craft business on Etsy.com and he will be there at the craft show. I would encourage everyone to stop by his booth and purchase one, it's great, those little pieces of craft.
Julie, no, let them do this, yes?
Yes, right. It's free, comes open to the public, so come out of the Arts of Craft Show. And that's basically about it. They did have, they have a nine and nine group that the veterans were involved with last Friday and that group which meets supposedly golf and dining once, at least once a month, raised $2,000 for the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores this Friday, so good things happening, good things to report.
Trustee Schaller, did you pass your last CERT boards? Are you officially CERT?
No, I didn't, I mean, I passed the various things.
Come higher levels.
Yeah, right, yes, passed those. I've also passed five with the set of our Dedicated Community Leaders Association.
Karen, I'll do your homework.
That's right, yes.
Because we had a discussion at Baycock and they were wondering if anybody in there had, you know, was using CERT volunteers or if they had any, I can come through the?
Matter of fact, that, thank you for reminding me, but Baycock is going to do another tabletop exercise in January, I believe, but we're having a meeting either next week or the week after. And this exercise this year, rather than blowing up all of Barrington with a fire and a train wreck, will be more realistic, an active shooter. What do you do if there's an active shooter in the area of the area of the station? So that's something all of Baycock and the United States Department, they've got the police department and all of that, so I've been at planning meeting coming up in a couple weeks.
Thank you for your work on that, that's critical.
And Minister Dalton Lang and I are working on the emergency operating plan for the village of Lake Barrington to update it, it actually is in pretty good shape, it's just a matter of, just a little bit of tweaking.
Our notebook?
Our notebook, right, yeah, what do you do in case of emergency? Move to Morocco.
Are there questions for trustee Schaller? Trustee Perkins is not here this evening. Karen, are there any report on roads and infrastructure that in trustee Perkins' absence?
Nothing that's not already been said.
Okay. There is no old business under agenda item, so we can move to 13 ordinances, there are two this evening. A is consideration of an ordinance amending Title 8 zoning of the village of Lake Barrington, Village Code regarding Section 8 dash 2 dash 2 definitions, and it concerns the definition of a kennel in the zoning code. The second one is a ordinance amendment tobacco and alternative nicotine products, and this would add alternative nicotine products to the definition of tobacco products and accessory crude alternative products and the definition of smoking. This is not only to discourage use of alternative nicotine products, but to include them in the prohibition of smoking on village property and other public places. Mr. Baycock, you want to send these to, uh, give it away nationally?
Sure. So a few months ago, the village board adopted some new regulations and clarity to its animal control ordinance relative to kennels and the number of dogs which are permitted, which is three adult dogs. And this, this amendment to the zoning ordinance simply, basically coordinates the definition of a kennel, it's in the zoning regulations, and so that it cross-references the village's animal control regulations, so that makes everything work together and it removes any doubt about how those two different ordinance provisions of the village code should be interpreted. So, and we had a brief hearing before the plan commission, this, they recommended approval and it's the, the second part of what you did a few months ago to update animal control provisions. The second ordinance is to reflect the fact that Illinois statutes now regulate not only tobacco and prohibited by use, sale to, purchase or possession by someone under 18, but they do the same thing with reference to alternative nicotine products, which are like e-cigarettes and the fluid you use in them, and so this updates the village code in that regard.
Questions for council on either mission?
On the kennel, is it three, three total dogs and cats or three of each?
Three of each.
Okay.
Okay, of each. And we clarified that in the, new provisions in the, in the animal control, and thanks to Ms. Dalton Lang's suggestion that we do.
He was making simple.
Then chair would like a motion, there are no further questions or comments for staff. Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items 13A, consideration of an ordinance amending Title 8 zoning of the village of Lake Barrington, Village Code regarding Section 8 dash 2 dash 2 definitions, and B, ordinance amendment tobacco and alternative nicotine products under 15B. May I have a motion to some? That trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Thompson. Thank you both gentlemen, clerk, please call and roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes. There are no resolutions, no new business, this is the agenda item 16, second opportunity for the public to address the village board. And 18, there is no, sorry, I apologize, I was even ahead of myself. I'm trying to prove a point to absent trustees that I can run a meeting efficiently.
Are you sure you didn't do options in another life? So, Maria Peterson here and I want to thank all of you for welcoming me over the past year as I've come back and forth to listen, and I think it's really vital to, as a candidate, to listen to what's going on in each village. So you learn a lot of things and as I canvassed, I hear residents either say wonderful things or complaining, and so I feel that I could be like a little, willier is that, shall I say, between myself and your village, and so I always try to encourage people that if they're not happy, that they should run as well instead of complaining, so if I win, I will be back again and again and again, and I look forward to working with all of you. So have a wonderful Thursday, or, no, today's Tuesday, I'm sorry, by the end of the day my mind is gushy and I haven't eaten dinner yet, so, and I'm fasted here. So thank you and have a wonderful Tuesday evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, saying for the campaign trail, having not only done this locally with my colleagues, but I've worked on some campaigns in the public, these are long hours. It's a time of year when the weather changes and the light gets less daylight and so everybody gets sick, everybody gets a cold, I'm getting over one right now, and that's why I didn't shake anybody's hand tonight, because I didn't want to give you my cooties. So God, you know, it's, it's.
Sometimes it's a family joke sometimes.
No, you can do that in a nice way too. We usually, you tell, Matt. Okay, there being no other business, my favorite agenda, I don't share with like a motion to adjourn. Some, by trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Mitchell. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.